Motion was made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We'll move right into the agenda of September 10th. Yeah, the minutes for the meeting. Have you all had a chance to look them over?
Mm-hmm.
See anything that sticks out as a glaring error?
Do accept.
Ted can't get into the meeting. Hang on just for a second. I'm going to send him another invite. Let's see, how do I do this? I should tell him to go out and get it from the website.
I can just forward it to him if you want.
Yeah, if you could, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. And Marty, did you move to accept the?
Yes.
The minutes? And I will second that. They're very short.
Motion was made and seconded for the minutes. Is there, there's no discussion?
That was for the September 1st or 10th?
The 10th for Pave Tech.
Hang on, hang on just for a second. Ted's calling me. Yeah, Ted?
I just sent him the link, Rich.
Okay, I see that he's tried. There he is. You've got to unmute it, Ted.
Okay, good.
Good enough. Okay, so. We've approved the agenda and we're going to vote on approving the minutes of September 10th.
Yeah.
Marty? Roger? Tom?
Aye.
Susan? It is unanimous.
Motion, please, Mr. Chairman?
Susan made the motion, Marty seconded it.
Vice versa.
Oh, sorry, the other way around. Marty made the motion, Susan seconded it.
Yonkers, Yonkers is supposed to be somewhere here.
Jens was here, but he disappeared. Did you get that, Ted?
No.
Jens was here, but he has disappeared. It looked like he was having some audio problems and then he just went away.
Okay. Well, we have a quorum.
It's, it's that time of the meeting for public comment. So if any members of the public have anything that they would like to address that is not currently on the agenda, now is the time to say so. And looking at the, the two groups of people that are not on the board and assuming that you have nothing to say because you're not frantically waving your hands and jumping up and down, we will move right along. Public hearings. Oh, no, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Let me go back to, I still have the minutes from last week up. Okay, bucket list prioritization. I'm going to turn this one over to you, Ted. You have the, the list of items that we, that we had said we wanted to look at.
Yeah. Well, let's see, we've got, I've got responses. I think I sent them all to you. Got responses of prioritization from, let's see, from Rich, Tom, Susan, Jens, and Roger. And I think I sent that to you. It was kind of all over the place except, let's see, Rich and Roger started off with shoreline exceptions. Get those out of the way. Tom wanted to dive right into the elimination of the R3 district. And Susan and Jens wanted to start off with commercial driveways. So we have no consensus. And, and we have, although I would should say that Tom's next ones were all the special exceptions for the shoreline zoning. And where we have some, some consensus was in dealing with age restricted, multifamily cluster. And that was pretty much going in sawmills. We had some of that. And then Susan and Jens were pushing hard on the commercial driveways and the 25-foot buffer and rural conservation district. So I thought we were going to start off with rural conservation district, but it looks like everybody wants that kind of get started on, get a lot of other things out of the way first.
Well, I'm fine with special exceptions, so that's where we go. Let's, you know, you've got my vote.
And I agree. I'm fine with starting with the special exceptions. When it comes to the rural conservation, one of the things that Tom had pointed out about multifamily housing, we have to address that issue because it's going to be allowed in the R4 district. So we've got to figure out what kind of standards we want to have and how we want to go about applying those. So a, a number of the items that we had looked at and said, yes, these are important items. All relate to the R4 in one fashion or another.
To the chair?
Yeah, Marty.
I didn't throw my two cents in with beforehand, but I think before we turn around and do that, we should turn around and get the three and four, get that in line first before we turn, turn around wondering what we can do in what district. I mean, that's the comprehensive plan. And if we get that done first, then we can turn around and take the care of the, the senior and the special exceptions and everything else.
Well, the special exceptions need to get dealt with right away.
Because they're fresh on our mind.
Well, not, not necessarily because they're fresh on our minds. Those are, that was one of Bob Coons' famous landmines and it blew up and it bit us and it bit us hard. We need to address that particular issue so that it doesn't come back. We, you know, we need to decide, do we want to have special exceptions? And if so, how are we going to define them? Because the way it is right now, yes, we can have special exceptions. We don't even know what that means.
So I have a question. Ted, by eliminating the section altogether, is, does that open a bigger can of worms than modifying it and giving it shape and definition and closing the loopholes? So which is the least slippery of the slopes?
I think they're both slippery. It's a good point, Susan. I mean, we could go back to the way we had it originally where there's, we have, we have, we basically have setbacks and we have the same setbacks that are specified in, in chapter 1,000 of the, the state shoreline zoning law. We, our standards are higher or more stringent in many cases than the states. And that's why they're letting us get away with special exceptions. There is no special exception in the state, chapter 1,000, which is the model, sub, model shoreline protection zone. And we, we found through, through some, some hard knocks, Tom will remember this, when we had the storage units that the state did absolutely nothing to protect some, some actually vital shoreline zone areas, including some rural pools, which we did not have that, we had not had very strong regulations to do that because we have the chapter 1,000. And DEP did not designate them as, as significant rural pools, even though the consultant said, yeah, they're significant. There's lots of egg masses in these. So that's why you, you came up with a more stringent, more stringent regulations for all of the districts. The other reason that you came up with a more stringent regulation was that stream protection, we felt we had a serious issue with open water protection on streams. We have a lot of streams that feed into the Kennamunk River. And we wanted to include more streams in it because we only had two. And now we, after doing the Kennabunk River study, we realized that the planning board was right. Had good reason to be concerned because we did have some serious issues. But the thing is, you can do it either way, Susan. You can, we can come up with special exceptions that, that lessen the impact for something that's really not a big deal. Not a really significant resource or it's, it's, that section of the resource is not significant. Or we can just eliminate the special exceptions altogether. The state lets us be more stringent than the state ordinance and many towns are. Kennabunk's more stringent than we are.
Ted?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Marty. I'm sorry.
No, since we're doing this Kennabunk River study or whatever else, not even with our, the way we have it set up, for the best interest of the town, how would it proceed if we keep our, our thoughts or our rulings so that we won't be as liable for problems in the future?
And, and we could do that, Marty. I mean, you know, the first thing I would say is that we would put in is that the special exception is not a remedy for a violation.
Well, and that's sort of where we got caught with our pants down, Ted.
Yeah.
That we assumed that it was implicit in the, in the ordinance that we were talking about non-man-made mistakes, intrusions on the landscape and so on and so forth. And because we weren't explicit enough, somebody slipped through that loophole. So the question is, how do we close the loophole without being too draconian? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I think the, the statement that, that we, the first, first rule is that, you know, it shall not be used as, as a remedy for a violation of the ordinance.
Yeah, and I like that.
First one. The second one would be then it's, it's specific to the, to the resource. And I think the one thing that we agreed to, and we did actually in a case down in Lady Slipper Lane, where we had the resource and the area that would be impacted was actually sloping away from the resource and was not draining into that resource. So there really wasn't an impact. It was an existing lot. It had been approved years and years before. The, this shoreline zone regulate, upgrades that we had done had rendered it more non-buildable than it was originally. So there was, there was a reason that the resource wasn't impacted. It wasn't a particularly important wetland. It was just a forested wetland that had not a lot of, of value. It wasn't, we aren't affecting wildlife corridors. In that particular situation, that worked. But we have to be restringent and, and actually put the resource first because this is a resource-based ordinance. The intent is to protect the resource. And in situation, it's got to be only situations where the resource will not be impacted. And the intent of the ordinance and the intent of the whole shoreline zoning is not, is not undermined by giving an exception. So it's got to be, it's, we've got to treat it almost like a, almost like a ZBA rule in a, for variance. 90% should never be granted and there's that 10% that really do qualify. So we have to be very vigilant about what qualifications we're going to put together. I think we kind of did that when we came up with the standards for the SO district, the shoreline overlay district where you can get an exception. And that's probably the, that's probably the most flexible district. When we get to stream protection, I don't know how much, I don't know how much we're going to really get in terms of leeway on that, especially if, if we do as, as the study committee stated that we're going to be labeled as a, as an impaired urban watershed. EPA gets involved.
Question right there. Protection of the streams. How would that turn out, do anything when we had that dam taken down? Which dropped the water level and everything else for our streams, which also caused, showed more erosion and everything else along the way. So our stream is not as full.
I would agree with you, Marty. I don't, you know.
I'm just asking questions.
It's a good question. In that particular case, we had a situation where, where estuine fish, estuine species were considered to be more important than upland freshwater species.
Has anything been proven that there, it's made any difference?
Well, the one thing that we did note, it was when the dam broke, that we had lampreys and black, black, black-backed heron fall out of the impoundment into the, you know, so they, they were able to get up there. I don't think anybody's done any follow-up. There is no requirement to do follow-up. So.
It's a good question.
It's a very good question. Did it achieve the intended goal?
That's, can we, can we request that?
From who?
Since, since we had everybody dancing to the drum of taking it down, let them dance backwards and give us some backfeed.
That would be a great suggestion to make because Jake is on the Kennabunk River Committee. But of course, we have no authority because we granted the permit, the deed is done. But it certainly would be something that we could throw at Wells Reserve and Trout Unlimited when the, when they, when they appear before us again.
I suggest that.
But we have, but we have no, no legal authority. We have no regulatory authority to require them to do any follow-ups.
I realize that, but I suggest it so that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. I'll put that in as a request for a follow-up for the study.
No, that's a good point, Marty. I'd keep that in your vest pocket for future because I don't think we're going away on this issue. This issue is going to come up again and probably the same team that did the initial study will do the second phase study, which is going to be identification and mitigation.
Okay.
So Ted, oh, sorry, can we just get back to the ordinance at hand? I mean, how specific do you want to get in terms of streams and whatever? Or do you want to make it general and then based upon the subjective judgment of the planning board within the parameters of the ordinance?
I think the plan needs, needs, I think that playboard would appreciate having some set standards, set, set checks that we have to achieve in order to get it. It's no different than giving variance. You need to meet five criteria in order to get a variance. You should have certain set criteria that you must meet in order to get an special exception. And we started establishing that. We did that with the XO district. We probably can do a few more modifications than that. I had proposed to you guys, I, I'm not sure you still have it in your, in your files, but I had proposed a, a similar thing for the stream protection district. We passed the SO district in this, this past session. And the stream protection district, I gave you a recommendation. And the RP district, well, I haven't done anything in the RP district because I want to see where we stood, where you guys, the prioritization you have on these before we start working on it. But I think we have to make sure we have ironclad checkmarks that are reliable, replicable, and defensible in case we get challenged in court.
And I, I agree, but the one, and, and the, the one thing that I want to see is the last one in the stream protection district. Special exception provision shall never be applied as a remedy for a violation.
Right.
And I think that should be in all of the districts. You can't violate the district and then say, oh, I want a special exception to fix that problem.
Yeah, I think that's probably the first one.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree too. It would be, in the past, for those cases, we had nothing to go by. I would like to have that at stake in the ground.
Yeah, that's the way it should be.
Yeah.
And it could be.
That should be in, maybe that should be in a part of the ordinance. So we don't have to sprinkle it through, maybe in the definitions as to what a special exception is and to what it's applicable.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah. So it would be in the definition of a special. We don't have a definition of it yet, so.
And then it, it's, it's about the resource, not about the individual or the parties that want to, who are seeking the special exception. So it's about the benefit of the resource, not the benefit of the parties seeking the exception.
I concur.
Okay. And that, and yeah, it's, it's, it's where we, you know, the funny thing is in, in, in land, in zoning ordinances, land use ordinances, you know, if there's a discretion, it usually goes towards the, the property owner. In, in the planning boards, if there's room for discretion, it's usually in favor of the property owner. In this particular case, if there's, if there's, if there's some wiggle room, it really should always be towards the resource instead of the property.
It, it, we're trying to protect the resource, hence the name resource protection.
Right.
So I, I would agree with that. And I, I don't have a problem if, if there's wiggle room. Okay, but our, our goal is to, is to protect the resource.
Right.
Can we have that part of it as the definition?
Yep.
Yes.
That is the definition of this, in chapter 1,000, the DEP does, you know, that it's, it's all about the resource. And, and the only way they really can do it is by having these setbacks and strong limitations on what, what kind of activities can occur in it. So.
Question, maybe this is off, but the selectmen are having a special meeting, but it's MSU 1,000. Is this related, using the word 1,000, does that have any bearings? Or am I out of, out of page?
I, I, when you say MSU, what's, I'm confused, Marty. What's this?
Supposedly on the web, that the selectmen are having a special part of a meeting at the next board and it says they're in discussion with the MSU 1,000. And I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I saw that acronym too in the, it wasn't in the, it's in the comprehensive plan somewhere.
No, but it also too was posted on the website.
I don't know, Marty. I, no, this is, this is chapter 1,000. It's in the DEP regs and it's.
Okay.
And it's nothing to do with that. I don't think the selectmen are engaged in that at all.
I've just, just seen 1,000. We don't usually talk about 1,000. And this is why I just asked that question.
It's good, it's a good question. I'll find out. I can't think what.
It's posted right on the, the website and then, but if anybody wants any information, it says go to the town hall. If they don't have anything posted to read.
Don't ask me because I have no idea. I guess they want to have to tell them.
So we have two line items, two bullet points.
Oh, you know what it is, Marty? It's a multi-camera remote control panel. It's regarding the infrastructure in the, in the town hall meeting room in which the camera can be, can basically be operated remotely to hone in on people and, and so they can see you when you're, you know, sneaking in some Snickers underneath. And it basically controls all of the cameras and the microphones. That's what it is.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's, it's not nefarious. I, I think Susan, did you say that we've got to get down to prioritizing what we've got here?
Well, we have two bullet points and you wanted to have approximately five. So we, I think you've outlined the definition pretty well.
Yeah.
That it's, it's not a remedy for a violation and it has to defer to the well-being of the resource and not the applicant. So that goes in the definition. What else would you want to include in the body of the ordinance?
Well, it would be, I would want, I would want very specific criteria for, for the, the, we have three zones and it would be, and they all focus on, on different things. The resource protection is probably where I'd say, that's a rough one because that's a, that's large wetland complexes. And they're usually, obviously, the more complexity, the more valuable they are. Stream protection, I think, I think I already wrote one for you guys. You probably don't remember it. That was a couple of months, that was about a month ago or two. It was after, I think it was in August.
I don't remember it.
Yeah, I should have included in your packet. I'm sorry.
Well, you, you gave us something.
Yeah.
On the criteria for granting a special exception.
Right.
In the stream protection district.
Mm-hmm. We had started working on that, but, you know, then we, then we had a whole bunch of applications, you know, dumped on us. So we stopped working on the ordinances for a while.
You know, it's got things like no slopes greater than 20%.
Yep.
Must be a single-family residence. Has to be on a lot of record prior to June 14th of 2017. And there is no alternative placement for a site.
That's always.
It's all of this stuff that, that, that we've had in there for a while, which is fine. And, and I think that would work with the addition of, of the, the
Violation.
Remedy not being available due to a violation.
Yeah, I'd also be wanting, I'd also, I think we're going to find that we're going to get a little more stricter on, on some of our, our standards for RP zones, you know, or excuse me, SP zones, stream protection zones, because of the current problems that we're having with, with cumulative nutrient loading that, that study, that the Kennabunk study showed. So we might have to say there's no exceptions for, well, there's no exception for, for septic systems anyway under state law. But we might want to look at how much clearing that would be allowed. And actually, right now, there's no clearing in that 75-foot setback. There's supposed to be none because that's supposed to serve both as a, as a buffer and also as a wildlife cord. Because as more and more land, as we have more and more land developed, those streams become critical. Deer migratory, well, not just deer, but all, all sorts of species migrate along those streams. And when you break that stream, when you break the cover, it can cause some issues for, for wildlife migration.
So Ted, I have a question for you because under, for other reasons, I've been reading about the resource protection zone and the shoreline overlay zone. And one of the things they talk about is setbacks being measured on the diagonal and not just a straight line, which makes the protected area greater and more of an arc than it is a box. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So.
Follow the way of the land. Yeah.
Right. So I think we should specify how it's to be measured. Is it on 75 feet on the diagonal? Because that's part of other ordinances or, you know, because it's vague. Some is 100 feet on the diagonal. I think in the resource protection zone, it's 100 feet.
It depends how, if you have a very steep slope, actually, your zone's going to be less. Your setbacks can be less if you do it based on, on topography.
Yeah, I think we should do whatever we can to keep it as a horizontal measurement rather than slope. I thought that was the intent anyways. Maybe it's not clear.
I think it's easier for the public to understand, isn't it?
It's fine, but in some of the ordinances, it clearly states that it's measured on the diagonal. So that would lead somebody to, you know, measure the area that's protected. It would provide for a greater area, I think.
In some cases, in some cases it would be lesser.
Right.
Depending on the gradient.
I didn't know if you wanted to include something like that or not. I don't have a horse in the race, so just remember that as part of the definition.
I have to, I think it, right now, in the shoreline zone, let me cut off real quick. Horizontal distance. That's how we have it. I mean, that's how we measure it, is horizontal distance.
Right.
Right. So it does say that in the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Well, that's, yeah. Well, that's, yeah, in some places. It doesn't say it everywhere. It doesn't say it in the SL district. The, it's, no. It, it says it in, in the, in the applicability, where it talks about, you know, how to define the zones. And it's all, it all uses horizontal distance.
Okay, good.
So the zones are defined by distance from the resource.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's better.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're looking to make, make for larger protections, so I think keep the, the definition simpler and use horizontal, but go to, go a longer distance.
Right.
No, I just wanted the language to be consistent, because it does repeat horizontal in number of places. And I thought if we do this, we should keep the language consistent, so it doesn't get too confusing.
Agreed.
Yeah. And so far, to be honest with you, everything we change is always reviewed by DEP. As you know, we have to get their certification before it becomes effective. And they, they pick up something like that, to be honest with you. As Jeff picked up on our little, our little attempt to, to reduce the commercial frontages along, well, you know, we, we didn't have any commercial frontages in the town along Kennebunk River that was zoned for commercial, if you recall. They're all small lots, and you couldn't really get a subdivision of, of, of any type. So we lowered the commercial subdivision. We loaded, we lowered the commercial subdivision frontage on the Kennebunk River down to 200 feet. And you saw that Jeff caught that.
Yeah, he didn't like that idea.
He didn't like that. He said, Jeff, we don't have any commercial properties that are 300 feet. He said, don't care. So they, they do look, they do examine it, and they use Chapter 1000 as, as a, as a bible. So.
Okay, so.
Tad, you mentioned that Kenny Monk has stricter regulations than we do?
They have some stricter ones, yeah.
In relationship to the shoreline zoning?
Yeah, they basically, they identify the wetlands. They had the money to be able to actually go out and measure a lot of the wetlands and identify them. So they have different, they have, they've classified the wetlands based on value. Not just on the simple classifications that the state provides, but on, on actually Cowardon's system, which has been a longstanding system on how to, how to classify wetlands. And they've made value judgments of which wetlands are, are higher value than others. And actually, we tried the same thing, if you remember.
I thought we were, did that all together between a couple towns when they were doing that.
Well, what we did is we had that habit, beginning with Habitat program that DEP had done and the State Planning Office, which doesn't exist anymore, had done. And we actually did, for a while, have it based on the valuation that that program had given to various wetlands. But we found that they didn't cover all the wetlands, you know, and we found that it was got really difficult after a while. And then also, the map that I had up was getting bleached out by the sunlight, and I couldn't get copies. So I, we.
Make a new copy.
Yeah, well, it was all bleached up. But the fact was, it was, it was, it was complex. If you remember, it was so complex that, that you guys decided, look, we gotta make, we're gonna simplify this. And so we, we went based in on kind of size, size makes a difference. The larger the wetland, the more complex the wetland, the higher value it is. And streams, the minimum standard for a SP stream in the state definition is that portion of the stream from the source to the first branching or the first tributary. Well, that really doesn't do much about the watershed. And that's what we encountered. We came to the conclusion that that dealt with large streams or large rivers, and we had, you know, we, we have extremely well-drained watersheds. And that wasn't providing the kind of protection that we needed. And now we find out that it didn't. You know, we, we have some serious problems in some of our watersheds.
I thought the Golf Mill, Golf Mill Brook, a water stream, that was supposed to be one of the largest ones.
Yes. Yeah, it was. Well, actually, you know, both Duck Brook and Golf Mill, you know, have serious problems. So you guys, when you did that, you recognized that, you said, we're gonna, we're gonna go upstream a little bit further. And that's what's, what's key, because, you know, quite frankly, when, when we did the Thatcher Brook and the Richardson Brook watershed studies, we found that, that the problems could really originate in many cases way up in the watershed, way in the beginning of the watershed, Thatcher Brook especially. And that's where we had stagnant waters, that's where we had pollution, and that's where we had some, a lot of failed septic systems. And that was outside of what is the traditional DEP Stream Protection District. So that's why Bitterford really clamped down. And we did too. Remember, we have, we are in the uppermost portion of the Thatcher, in the upper Thatcher Brook watershed, and we increased the setbacks. That wasn't even protected, wasn't even on our radar, if you remember. And when we participated in that program, we, we put 100-foot setback around there, which is, you know, a lot of, that's a, that's a pretty big buffer to put. And that's what's on your map right now.
Do we want to include any of this in our ordinance, or, I mean, so we, so far, we have two, maybe three bullet points. Do we want to include some of this? Is it too specific? I mean, let's see if we can.
Data, hard data at this point, or any.
Sort it out.
Agreed upon remedy.
I'm perfectly willing to go along with the criteria in the Stream Protection District that, that Tad has sent to us.
I looked for that. I'm sorry, Tad. I couldn't find it in August, August or July. When did you, where did you see that, Rich?
I, no, this is, this is what he sent out to us with the agenda this week.
Oh.
You know, he, he put together some stuff with the proposed language for special exceptions in the Stream Protection District and some proposed amendments to the shoreline, the shore frontage spacing bulk requirements. And just addressing the, the language for special exception.
You guys are frozen. I'm gonna move. Get close to the router.
You know, he's, he's talking about granting a special exception of the 75-foot setback from the resource in the Stream Protection District, provided you meet all of the, these standards. Number one, the affected parcel must be a lot of record prior to June 14th of 2017. And there is no alternate place on the lot for the house to be placed. Number two, the encroachment is permitted only for a single-family residence, not accessory structures, walls, decks, or landscaping. Number three was, the applicant compensates for the loss of existing overstory and understory vegetation from the encroachment on the opposite side of the water course or along the stream corridor. And I'm really not sure what he was talking about with that one. The fourth one was the gradient of the bordering upland in the impact area, the natural reverse gradient away from the stream and associated wetlands. Number five was, there are no slopes exceeding 20% in the impacted area. And then the special exception not being used as a remedy for a violation. So I'm not sure what the applicant compensation for loss of existing overstory, understory means. I have to leave that up to Tad.
Oh, here.
Oh.
I'm back on, yeah.
Back on.
I had to move. The router wasn't working well.
Item number C, or item letter C, the special exceptions in the Stream Protection District, I didn't understand what that meant.
I think we're gonna have to simplify it. It's basically, if you're gonna take out some of the understory and the overstory, you've got to, you've got to restore it or, or expand it or replace it in some other way. Mainly because in the Stream Protection District, if you have, if you have vegetative cover, it's critical to reducing the temperature of the water, which is one of the problems that we already have. They talked about thermal issues in the, in the report. And in the areas where you just don't have any trees over it, the water gets warmer from being exposed to the sun. And that's what it is. So if you, if you eliminate, if you're gonna eliminate, you gotta, if for some reason you were to impact that, you have to restore it. Or you have to come up with a system of restoring some sort of overstory, so we don't have that issue of, of the water being heated up, but because of your development.
This is saying that they, if they compensate it by adding whatever the coverage is.
That's right.
Okay. Which, does that mean that that would grant, with that, could grant them special exception if they added more, more trees or whatever vegetation?
Yeah, let's say they're doing a driveway crossing or road crossing, you know, in which they open up that area. You could say, okay, we'll let you do that, but you're gonna have to plant some trees. So street, or you have to plant some trees around on the embankment. So as to we get, we get eventually some overstory there, so that we don't have water heating up there.
Trade-off.
It's a trade-off, yeah.
Yeah.
Want to do this, then you know, meet the standard of, of taking care of this issue that that causes.
Okay. Can we go back to number, letter B at the end for landscape elements? That seems like could be a little tricky. That some, in fact, last, last spring, without naming the applicant, they were required to add some landscaping or some vegetation with. So what would the difference be between vegetation and landscaping?
Well, in this, in this instance, we required him to do some landscaping, because we were going to allow him to stay in the, the, the Stream Protection District. So we said, yes, here's, here's the exception. You're going to be allowed to stay, but we want you to do some remediation to the property. This, this is saying that, no, you can't, you're not gonna do anything. You're not gonna have a deck, a wall, anything in that area, including planting trees, bushes, and shrubs, unless it's to take care of the encroachment in C.
Okay.
That's what DEP does, frankly, anyways. I mean, they, they watch that stuff like hawks. We don't have lakefront frontage like many other towns around us do. But it's kind of borrowed from that, where you, you have to do some compensation. You can't, you can't put, let's say, a deck down in the, in the shoreline zone, even though, even though it's supposedly not really that big of an impact, but it is. Or a stone wall going down, or a retaining wall. Boy, that's the one they really lose it on, is the seawall or a lake wall.
So would a landscape element include mowing lawns?
Yeah, it would. In fact, I'll tell you quite honestly, I will, again, I won't tell you who it is, but we have a situation where we have a major brook that's been landscaped beautifully right down to the edge of the water. And it's, and they're putting lawn fertilizer on it, so.
Yeah.
Imagine that might be a source of some of our nutrient loading. In fact, I'd probably say it is, yeah.
Probably one of the worst culprits.
It could be, it could be. It could be. The only thing is that we have high coliforms in that area, so it's not just nitrogen loading or phosphorus loading. It's, we also have, you know, obviously E. coli, we've got some septic problems.
Is this the product of the homeowner not understanding it or obstinate?
Probably it's an educational issue.
That would be better.
It would be a much better way to do it. In, in all these programs, when you do these, these, these watershed studies, there's a huge educational element to it. And if you see where they've done these, a good example would be Bitterford. Although that program's still, still in its, I shouldn't say infancy, because they're doing a lot of work. But if you know Red Brook in Scarborough, that's been going on for a long time.
Yeah.
That's really been going on a long time. And that, there was a huge educational element in that, which has helped a lot. It starts in the schools, the school kids bringing home to mom and dad. And the word gets around, they put up all their signs here in the Red Brook watershed. And it makes a, it actually does have an impact over time, it really does. So in that particular case, Jens, I think that we would find that we were to tell the homeowner, look, you know, this, these are the ramifications of what you're doing. Jeez, we would, we think, maybe you should start thinking about a different way of approaching your landscaping.
Can we put anything in there, since it's down along the stream or whatever? The fact is, it has to be followed by those guidelines.
Well, I mean, we could do.
So they can't play dumb and say, I didn't know?
Well, in that case, I, I would say in that particular case, you had a homeowner who did this. It was not regulated at the time, and now it's regulated. So I'm not gonna sit there and, and wanna beat up a homeowner who's done this and, and bring in the enforcement action, because at the time that he did it, it was an allowable action.
I'm saying for the future.
Oh, for the future, yeah. No, I mean.
I mean, have that as a guideline for the future, they have to.
Absolutely. But of course, our ammo is gonna, gonna be, we're, we're gonna be supported by, especially in the stream situation, you know, this river study is gonna give us a lot more tools and a lot more information to be able to, 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 I would say, do more surgical regulation, to deal with the real hotspots and then preventative areas. And so we do some good planning without over-regulating, if you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Do proportional, proportional response. That's what's good about these studies. We could do proportional response instead of saying, that's it, no more development than 500 feet of the stream. So.
Well, I guess the question for the rest of the board is how do you feel about what Tad has created for us on this section? Do you want, do you want more stuff put in there? Are you, are you satisfied with what, what we have? Should we take some of it out?
I, I like it the way it is. I, I don't want it to be overly restrictive. I think this gives us a lot more stand-on.
I agree.
I go along with that.
Yay.
And then if we find it's a problem down the road, this really isn't a, a regular problem. It, it might spring up once every couple of years, maybe, I don't know. But if it does become a problem, if we, when we do the study on the, on the Kennebunk River, we can come back and, and update this.
Mine too, yeah.
Yeah. We, at the same time, we've got to remember that this is, this is a special situation that we allow this. In general, no, you can't do this. So it's like, in general, you can't do this. You've got to meet these very special circumstances in which you're not gonna create an impact. Then we'll consider that. And I think part of that, when you guys first came up with this, was because you recognized that in some cases, there would be situations in which the, some of these ordinances were gonna be a, a little tough on certain landowners. We want, if there was a special situation, that we could relax them, relax them if there was no impact on the resource. And that's a judgment call, but, you know, it's hard to keep that. When, when you're dealing with this, it's, it's hard not to sympathize sometimes with the homeowner. So we want to make sure that it's very clear that this is something that is a special circumstance, and that's only when we grant it. And you've got to meet very special criteria in order to get it. Otherwise, hey, like everybody else, put your house 75 feet away from the resource.
The only, the only thing that I see in here, you know, is the very, is the very first statement. The planning board may grant a special exception of the 75-foot setback. I think we need to define how much of a setback we're going to allow. I, I would say that special exception should be no more than 25 feet.
You can do that.
Otherwise, I, with it, with it the way it sits right. Otherwise, I, with it, with it the way it sits right now, it could be all the way up to the, to the, to the resource itself. And I, I would just assume define, this is how much of an exception we will allow, given everything else. If everything else checks off, then yes, you can have that exception.
And that's how it is. We have, we have a maximum setback or a minimum setback in all these situations. We can go to 25 feet, you know, for, for short resource, for, excuse me, for shoreland overlay. You can, you can have it up to 25 feet away from that, that resource. That might be a little too generous.
Yeah, I would say up 50 feet would be.
But it depends on the circumstance. I mean, in some cases, if you think about it, you know, I, I think about the situation where I've seen in other towns where you have a farmer's field at the top and there's a deep ravine. And he's, and it doesn't, the slope does not drain towards that. It's basically, when you plow a field after a while, you build up a little bit of a slough on the edge. So the rain doesn't necessarily go right into the brook automatically. If the slope was going away from the stream, as it does in many cases, then what's the harm? You know, it, it depends on the situation. It's something, you, you can't have it hard and fast. You have to look at that situation, but there, there should be minimum criteria and it shouldn't be granted easily.
So why don't we also add a bullet point, or at least in my opinion, I think we should, that circumstances that are particularly complex, I don't want to use the word special. I think I can find another word, come, have to come before the board and it's up to the board's discretion. Or that in other words, there are gonna be circumstances that just don't, that need further review other than what's outlined in the ordinance. And so when that's the case, and it's more complex, then people should understand they need to come before the board. And then it becomes a discretionary issue and how we decide as a, a body, whether or not these, but these circumstances require more consideration.
Susan, how about the word challenging?
Challenging, I like challenging.
How about extraordinary?
Extraordinary, challenging, and maybe complex isn't the right word because everybody thinks their problems are complex. You know what I'm saying? And I, and that, it puts people on notice that the board ultimately has discretion.
Yes. And that's, the, the whole thing is it's, it, don't expect it. It, it's only in a very, very unusual situation.
Right.
And I would explain that to, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm the gatekeeper on that for you guys. I'll, I'll sit there and say, you got a chance in, in, you know, in five on this, you know, you, you're, the board's not gonna be swayed by this. Don't waste their time. Don't waste your money. If you really want to, we'll take you there, but because they, they always ask you, what do you think the chances are? I said, well,
I hope you say slim and none more often than not.
It's your money. You could go to the board or you could take your, your wife for a vacation in Bermuda. Which one do you want to do?
Take your chances with the board.
Chances, yeah. So.
So I'm good with that. I'm good with all of that.
All right. So we've got, that would mean that we would get two. And then we need the third, which is the resource protection, which I haven't given that much thought right now on, on what kind of, what kind of, uh, you know, the thing is, if, if we get into a DEP resource protection definition, we have a straight, we have a water, if we have a, a wetland that has significant habitat for waterfowl and has, has a very significant effect on water quality in terms of, uh, water quality processing and where, where stormwater management, stormwater detention and recharge. Uh, I don't want to even get into that because DEP is not gonna like that. So that's gonna be a little more delicate with DEP.
Is that a preemption issue?
Yeah, they, they always can preempt. DEP has the authority to preempt at any, I shouldn't say at any time. They don't come and tell you you're wrong in a particular case. They can warn you that this is a, that, that situation where you granted that permit did not keep with the spirit or the letter of, you know, chapter 1000. And as I've seen it happen before, you grant too many variances or you grant too many exceptions, they will step in and say, you're in danger of, uh, losing your, your authority and we will step in and administer shoreline zoning in your town. And they, about a decade and a half ago, they almost, they almost did that to the town of Gray, where the ZBA was granting too many, uh, variances for, for, along the lakes in that, in that town. And they stepped in and had a very serious talk with the, with the selectmen. Well, they have a town council, town council, form of government. And, uh, they replaced a lot of people in the ZBA. They got some tougher, tougher people in there, uh, because nobody wanted the state to take over.
Okay, so let, let's-
Naples, Naples, for instance, state, that's state regulated. They do all the, the shoreline zoning in Naples, so.
Is this ready to go the way it is? Do we need to make a change to it or can we move on, accept it and schedule a public hearing?
I would want to do all three of them. I want to do the RP too. If you want to do the RP, we do all three at once. Uh, I think we've already decided.
But the, but the way this is, is fine.
I think it.
So I, I agree. We can do all three of them at the same public hearing and that would be fine. But I just, I want to be able to put this aside and move on to the next item.
Okay, good. Here we go.
The next one was the proposed amendments to the shoreline zone. A shore, shore frontage space and bulk requirements?
Yeah, you guys already decided that.
Well, I was just, I was looking at it going, what?
That's what was rejected, if you recall. That's what Jeff had said, don't do it. And the only reason on that, if you recall, that was a situation where we have lots fronting a shoreline zone that was not a recreational resource. In other words, the purpose of the lot was not to use the resource. It's just they abutted, you know, a, a, a stream protection district, actually shoreline overlay district. And the state says if you have a lot that abuts that, you have to have a minimum shore frontage. And, and this was a cluster development, so we had a bit of a problem where they didn't really care about that. They, they weren't selling the lots based on the resource. So, you know, we talked to Jeff and, and said, well, we only have really two resources that really qualify for, for your concern here. And that is we have the Kennebunk River, which yes, that is a water resource. And we have one great pond and that's Brimstone Pond. So those are really the only two areas where we would have something that would be significant, that people would actually want to have shore frontage on. You might say that about Goff Melbrook, I don't know, but right now we're just saying Kennebunk River. And we're saying Brimstone because of those, one's a great river and one's a great pond.
Well, the, the thing that had me confused was in the very first one, eight, six, one, four, the space and bulk requirements.
Yeah.
Shoreland frontage for commercial and institutional uses is being eliminated.
No, that's the old one.
They did September 17th, 2020.
Well, it's not eliminated. No, I don't think it was eliminated. It's supposed, is it? I don't have it.
No, I don't, I don't think we voted on it, but it, but it.
No, that's what Jeff took, Jeff slapped us for that.
But my, my point being in here, it was lined out, so it looks as if it's being eliminated.
No, it's going back in and we're just, we're, we're, we're putting Jeff's, we're putting the 300 foot back in.
For the commercial and recreation.
Yeah. Now, Jeff said, put it back in and I'm, okay, fine. But we're, we're changing it. We, we, we're making the dramatic change in this from any single shoreline zone that we've got to just the Kennebunk River and Brimstone Pond.
Yep. And, and, and that's fine. It just makes it, it just had me confused because it looked as if we were taking it out completely and I'm going, no, I'm, I'm, I know I'm missing something because we had that discussion about Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Ted, may I ask something about, uh, Brimstone Pond? Is there any kind of, uh, practical public access to that body of water? There is not, correct? It's wholly, whole, it's sure is wholly privately owned?
Yes.
Okay. And how many, how many landowners are you aware that have frontage on it? And do those-
I'm aware of two.
Do those landowners still have, uh, also have, uh, frontage along like Limerick Road or Brimstone Road or what have you?
Yeah. I'm only aware of three property owners that have, have frontage directly on the shoreline. And, but you see, under state law, any open body water of 10 acres or more is automatically classified as great pond and that automatically becomes a resource protection district. And so, and it's not just the pond, the water body, it's the associated wetlands. And there are a lot of associated wetlands in that. So if you look at our shoreline zoning map, you see this giant blob up there in that corner of the town. And that's not only Brimstone, Brimstone Pond's a little part of it. And it's all the associated wetlands around that. And if you probably, you may recall, you might not have been on board then Jens, but one of the property owners had, had Alfred go in and, and do a, a more theological study, looking at whether they were, these wetlands were actually interconnected. And they were all part of one wetland where they were different. And they came to the conclusion that there were two different wetlands in there. Yeah, they were all part of the same water machine, but they were separated by a ridge. And so one of them became a shoreline overlay district. And, uh, but the rest of it remained resource protection.
We still have those.
You remember that Bud LaGro had asked us.
Yes. We still have those maps.
Yep, still do. And they're, they're on our shoreline zone map. And we're doing some upgrades, uh, to our zoning and shoreline zoning map. We're gonna make it a little clearer this time because it was really hard to read the last time. So we're doing that right now. But that's why, and, and the thing that's interesting, uh, with this Jens, is that that is a very shallow great pond. It's six feet deep at the, at the deepest point. And it's actually, there's a lot of emergent vegetation that's closing in on it. And eventually it's not going to be a great pond any longer.
Well, no, I think, I think the water might be six feet deep, but it's probably sitting on six feet worth of muck.
Uh, that's true too, but that's, depth doesn't matter. It's area. Again, size matters. So that's, that's the only issue. But you're right. Yeah, it has no practical real use for us. It's given a great deal of weight in, in our subdivision ordinance and our zoning ordinance, only because it's defined technically as a great pond under state regulations.
So we're spending this time talking about this property and it's a matter of practical utility to the current owners. I, I, I really wonder about that. But if you could ever have walking paths, put walking paths around that, uh, that body of water. I gotta believe there's a lot of bird lives and other things. That would be an extraordinary thing, I think, because we don't, it'd be a good, it would be a good addition. But of course, it'd have to be access and, and would have, there'd have to be some willing, uh, landowners, uh, participating in some sort of, uh, easement or gifting or something. But what we're doing here, uh, I hope that whatever we're doing with that wouldn't impair that potential. If people concluded that that would be a good direction to go in.
You're, you're bringing up a really interesting point because I had this conversation with ACT with the, the Oriental Conservation Trust, several members of that. And one of the things I was looking at as an exception for the resource protection district would be an interpretive center, a nature interpretive center, uh, which would not be allowed into the current Resource Protection Act. And, uh, or definition, resource protection definition. And, uh, um, I think that's a great resource out there that should be open to the public. If we can, if we can secure it. And we would probably want to have some, some structure in there and some interpretive centers in there in order to help, help with the, the education of both the kids and the public. And provide it as, as a passive recreational facility for the town. And yes, I agree with you Jens, I think it's a great resource. Uh, the property owners might, might be interested at some point. And, uh, I think ACT should probably go start talking to them.
Isn't that all still within one family?
No, it's just two. There's two and, and one more. It's mainly the LaGroves and, uh, Mike or Matt. Jeez, what's, what's Matt's name away from me right now? But yeah, it's two families. And I think there's one other, one other person who's got, one of the, one of the LaGroves.
I mean, that's what I meant, within the family tree.
Within the family. And, and, and they're, they've developed that section, as you know, because we did that subdivision, that family division down there. About as much as they're gonna develop. But then you've got the, all the land on the other side too. And there's, and there's no development on the other side at all. No, no development at all.
There's no access to it either.
No, well, there's access a long ways away from Thompson Road. But it's, it's, it's not, there's a lot of Sibago, Mucky Pete and Benford and some really pretty heavy duty wetland soils.
Go and should get down there and talk with them.
Yeah. Well, we have the Oriental Conservation Trust and they are pretty active and pretty aggressive and, uh, maybe we can partner with them at some point on something like that because we do need more recreational resources. We need more passive recreational resources. And I think, I think they're, they're doing a great job. And if you get a chance, go look at that bike trail that we, uh, that we approved, what, last month? It's done.
It's done, yeah.
Really? No, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
They said they wanted, there was some urgency because the, the contractor only had a very small window within which to finish it. So that's great that it's done.
It's got some serious rollers in there if you need a mountain bike, so. It's flat, so the rollers you're gonna need for getting your, getting your momentum and your speed up, but, uh, it's more impressive than I thought it was gonna be. It's gonna be, I think it's, actually, I was talking to Nioto today. He came in and he was saying, I think we're gonna start getting people from out of town coming to this thing. You guys should think about charging a fee. Touching that one. Martyr minds than mine deal with that one. But, uh, yeah, it, it looks like a great facility. And they intend, they'll be back in front of us this winter, folks, to go over how to continue that bike trail. Probably not with the same level of, 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 uh, rollers and, and banks and dips that they have right now. But, uh, to, to get it to continue through the resource in, over to the, their connection with the Eastern Trail.
Okay.
Because one of the things that we do want to do is make sure we do have a connection to the Eastern Trail because we have the parking. And as you know, the, the parking on Limerick Road is, has been improved. Uh, Public Works Department did a great job on that. But I have a feeling that we're, it, already it's, it's undersized.
Yeah.
Because the population is increasing so much.
Yeah.
So.
You know, I, I see it every, every Sunday afternoon when I head out to get pizza.
Yep.
There's no place to park over there.
No, there isn't.
There isn't. Yeah, and on a bend, it's a little bit dangerous.
It's, well, of course, in every speed. So. But anyways, um, yeah, so yeah, your, your point's well taken Jens. And, uh, I'll pass on your, uh, the planning boards. I'll say it's the planning boards, uh, interested in that and to pass it on to ACT. Because there, they actually do want to work with us, by the way, on coming up with an open space plan. Both passive, passive recreational, active recreational and, uh, preservation. And they know that the planning board has, uh, some of the planning resources be able to do that. And, uh, they want to work with us. And one of the things that we've found is that a lot of our open space that we require in our, in our open space subdivisions really isn't used properly. Yeah. Doesn't link to other open spaces. Uh, it is not developed. It falls into disrepair. Some people, you know, landowners go in and they start using it within the development for other uses and those are overlooked resources and we should probably get them involved and get them advising us on, on, uh, the value of those open spaces and how maybe we can link them to other ones in the future. So, planning now is important because the, the steamroller of development's coming up, up the turnpike and it's gonna, it's, it's not gonna decrease, it's gonna increase.
Okay, so we skipped over a couple of items.
Yep.
Discussion of proposed amendments to the R4 as prescribed in the comp plan, specifically definition of rural character.
Could I ask one question though, before we proceed with that? Do I have a prioritization? I don't want my pri- Do I have a prioritization? I don't know what my prioritization, what I'm supposed to work on first. And say, I assume that we've already said that it's gonna be the shoreline zoning stuff, but I watched it for a while, because my internet went down, so I I wasn't sure if the board had come up with a priority list for me, a five.
We did not.
Okay.
I think seniors or 55 and older should be along through there for considering our tax base and our school systems. It should be possibly something.
Well, Ted, my suggestion? Take all of the information that we got.
Yeah.
And list it out and say, you know, this one got the most votes, this one got the next most votes, and just list out what all of those items are, and we can start at the top and work our way down through them.
Right.
I don't think commercial driveways are, is that important right this second, I think we have some other loopholes instead of trying to make more restrictions.
Well, sir, are we done with special exceptions, Ted?
I thought we were.
We're done with special exceptions. Is there anything else we finished in the meantime? Or is that the only one?
No, we finished. Sure frontage.
And sure, and frontage.
Yeah, so.
And setbacks.
Yeah, we have.
We did two.
Yeah, I have to do the RP, but we're well into that, so we might as well finish that off. So the shoreline stuff, we should finish off, because we're almost there. Then the next question is, and then the issue of wood sheds, I think I sent you a, tonight, a
Right, you sent one out afterward.
Yeah, I sent that after.
That's an easy one.
That's fairly easy. And that probably you can take care of, so that'd be two. And then the next one is, where do we want to go? Marty says it right, I mean, we've got 55 and older, we've got we've got the whole question of what are we gonna do with large lot, large and cluster development? Are we gonna continue requiring cluster development, are we gonna allow large lot development? I mean, we took a swipe at that a year ago, or two years ago.
Well, I guess the question on that becomes one of what are we going to define as a large lot? Are we gonna say that if you've got three acres, that's a large lot? Or are you gonna say you need five acres or 10 acres?
Or is it 10 acres?
Didn't you say six is a minimum, minimum six?
I think it was ten, I think we started with 10 acre lots.
What's considered an estate lot, Ted?
Well, estate lot, you know, that's false advertising, actually. And I'm responsible for it. The estate lot concept is the back lot. Back lot has a bad connotation, so I came up with a different name for it to make it sound better. A state lot is essentially a flag lot in the back of a land. It reduces the amount of road you have to build. A lot of towns get rid of it, we put it in to solve a problem that we have in this town. We have a lot of spaghetti lots, or lots that are longer than their wide. And that requires a lot of road building, and we thought, well, one of the ways we might be able to reduce the amount of road building would be to allow people to put in these long driveways to the back piece of land. You have a lot along the road, and then there's a right of way, or excuse me, a driveway goes in the back portion of the land, where you're out by yourself in a larger lot. And that, and that, that's essentially, it's a lot with a 50-foot frontage versus a 200-foot frontage. And actually, people have been doing it. It's actually becoming more and more popular. Because people want to get away, they don't want to be on the road necessarily, but they don't want to build a road. So gives them an opportunity to have a lot in the back. We have more road cuts, you know, in our regular road system, but at the same time, it's less cost to the property owner, and it's sometimes less impact to.
Less infrastructure.
There's much less infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, so far, it's, you know, it took a long time for it to get going, and of course, we remember that you, it's been used quite a bit to solve land use violations, or let's put it this way, lots that didn't have any frontage, lots that had no floating lots. And so it was used quite a bit as a way of remedying that, in which people weren't even using it. They were, they were using it to get legal frontage, and then using another way in. And you recall, the last, at the last meeting, the town meeting, we eliminated that being used as a remedy for a problem, and said, you have to use that access road that is you own in fee, you have to use that as your primary driveway. And in fact, I dealt with somebody yesterday out on Curtis Road, who was, that's the way they're gonna solve their problem. So they're gonna use it for a road, instead of as a way of getting around the regulations.
Okay, so back to the issue of large lots, we're looking at 10 acres, right?
That's what was proposed originally. And I think the comp plan committee liked that, too, if I recall.
Can I, are we dealing with this thing that you just sent out today, right?
Yeah, you've had it in your quiver for quite a while, it's from 2018.
Yeah, the one I'm looking at here, and we're talking about defining the minimum acreage that would be qualifying for cluster development, planned unit development.
Yeah, that's all, that's existing right now.
So that's what we've got now, and we're talking about increasingly the minimum lot size from six to 10?
Yeah, what we ran into is that there are a lot of people who didn't want these small lots, and what they, what they wanted is they wanted to have a big lot. And they wanted to have a lot of land. And they could, they wanted to be in a subdivision where they had huge lots. And our ordinance doesn't allow that, very simply. Unless you do it by a split or a family division, our ordinance does not give you an option of doing that. And the argument has always been that large lot subdivisions don't really do much for land open space conservation. They don't necessarily either preserve that concept of rural character. Because they look like houses that are springing up like weeds out indiscriminately out in the field. But that's with three or four acre lots. 10 acre lots is what the comp plan committee had recommended, because they said, they felt that that would be able to create more of a, more of a that would create more of a rural feel, but as we've talked about that before, it's not the size, it's how the lots are laid out and what the buffering is, and whether you can see them or not. So with that, this is an attempt to say you can have an exception to the requirement that you have to cluster all your subdivisions. You can have a large lot, but you're gonna design it in such a way that we can't, basically, we can't see it. You fold it into the folds of the land, you have a 75-foot setback, or a buffer strip that you don't cut at all. Or else, 75 or 100, I think we debated whether it was 75 or 100 foot. That's a, that's a big impact, but you're also getting a 10 lot, minimum lot size is 10 acres, so.
Ted, I have a question about that, so is there, will there be a deed restriction forever on that, or like? Because I think it's important, we don't want a five-year or even a 10-year horizon where they can then divide it again.
Exactly, and that's the whole point, it's a contract. It's no different than any of the other contracts we have. It's a contract saying, look, as long as this you, you, you were given an exemption.
But we jumped to.
And then you go right, we're given an exemption, and that's a contract between you and the town. And if you do that, then you're.
A large lot, we skip the rural character.
That's all right, I'll bring it back and just say.
You, you're, there we go.
Yeah.
Casey and Dewey, yeah.
They want to talk about rural, because you started talking about rural, then you jumped off of rural back to this.
So, getting back to rural character, I mean, Ted, you and I have talked about this, and there isn't a lot that is parallel between Los Angeles and Arundel, Maine. But one of the things that I told you about in a historic district, rather than making it a, the houses historic, giving them historic preservation designation. They had a historic overlay zone, and what that did was it required the neighborhood to maintain the street view. And I think that if we're gonna discuss rural character without imposing too many restrictions on the property owner, because they should be able to do largely what they want. But we want to maintain the street view in terms of people driving through Arundel, or down Senate Road, or down Limerick Road, or whatever, and so that there is some consistency that houses aren't built right on the road, and the way developments are done, and that's sort of what you were saying, that you can do what you want, as long as, you know, it doesn't impose on the street view, which, what you're trying to preserve is rural character. Now, it depends on how far you want to go with that, but it doesn't take a lot to sort of protect the street view and still give homeowners and property owners a leeway to do what they want with their land.
Yep. And that's, and you're right, Susan, I mean, the problem we've had for the last 10 years is trying to define, what do you mean by rural character? And we've gone around and around and around comp plan and so forth, and they talk about cultural character, and they talk about architectural character, and really, what we're really talking about at this point is character you see from the basic public highways, because that's how most people view a town, is from driving around on the public highway, so.
Right, and the connector roads and the main roads.
Yeah, we should just deal with it from the highway, as you say. We did that in the Townhouse Corner District, if you remember. We basically have design standards for the front of the building, and do what you want in the back, but in the front, you have to have certain design standards. And I think that would be the same thing in the rural district, the rural conservation district.
Works for me.
I have to tell you, the other, last week, I was driving down on the Merritt Parkway in Connecticut. And you can't tell that that is a commercial road. You can't see any of the houses on the road. Yeah, you come across an exit, and it's quite obvious, there's a bunch of stuff out there, but it's all very well hidden behind all of the trees. And, you know, if we're gonna talk about rural character, to me, that's the only way I can determine what rural character is, unless you have cows in your front yard. Which I'm really not sure would go over that well.
Well, we still have those.
And that's really street view.
Am I allowed to make a comment?
It is, it is street view, yes, yeah, Dewey, go ahead.
Okay, I understand that. My first degree was in technical forestry, we had something called basal area limits, in other words, you know, back a while ago, you couldn't cut within 50 feet or 100 feet of a road so as to not ruin the rural character of of the area, but behind it, it could have been a clear cut. So as we know, we've had a unique situation. So I kind of have a I'm not sure I'm comfortable with simply having a setback if we're gonna have a paper mill behind it.
Yep, no arguments.
Yeah, I would agree. And at the same time, you have to look at it and say, okay, so we tell you that you have a 100-foot setback from the road. Well, what if the first 80 feet of that have already been cleared? You know, so now you're faced with the fact, okay, you're gonna have a 20-foot buffer? Everybody's gonna see that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's not that simple.
Oh, no, I agree, it's not.
I agree with you, yeah. You know, I will tell you, Dewey, the problem we have is, we also have timber harvesting regulations here in the town, which you cannot cut more than 40% basal area. And you go and get a permit from the code enforcement officer, and and Jim will be the first one to tell you, I have no idea what 40% basal area is.
I do.
Yeah.
So if I can ask.
And that's, well, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I interrupted, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ted.
No, the issue is, having standards like that, we have to have the ability to measure that and to enforce it. And that, that means that we would have to increase our knowledge. We'd have to, the code enforcement officer can understand that, you know, and police this, and that's gonna be an issue.
A challenge in a small town.
Yeah, it's a challenge in a small town, and.
Ted, does that mean somebody can cut 40% of a single area and not cut anything else? That's sort of what Dewey was saying.
Yeah.
That you could maintain a buffer, and you could still only cut 40%, but decimate one entire area, so is it really only four and 10 trees in an area? Or is it overall four and 10 trees, which leaves so much discretion in terms of what happens to the surface of the land in terms of clearing?
Just the number of trees, it also considers the size of the trees, that basal area. So you could probably cut down 10 small ones, you wouldn't know the difference. Or one large one, it would make a difference. So there is, there is a formula.
Define it, there's, we have the basal area law. So people are, like Ted said, we drive down the highway, we don't want to look at a clear cut, right? So the whole point of the regulation is, within X feet from the road in, you want to create enough of a buffer so that somebody's driving by, they go, oh, those are nice trees, but they can't quite see in the back. And so it depends on main revised statutes amintited. It depends on whether or not you want a clear cut. You want a selective cut. There's all sorts of stuff, and you know, if you go up to the North Country, you'll see, if you go up to to Bethel, or you go up to Sugarloaf, you'll see in the mountains, there's these little patches that have been clear cut. But you can't see them from the road. So my point is, if we're gonna I just don't want to create a trap here, if we define rural as being a setback, somebody could go in, clear cut, somebody could put in a paper mill. I'm just saying, I don't have an answer for this, but we've got to be very careful about how we do this.
So you're just saying, like Dewey, that that's just, the setback is just one tool in the chest, we gotta consider others.
We also, we also have to consider.
That's correct, in the interest of forestry, it's, the law was enacted, so people coming up here to, you know, go vacation and stuff, you know, they would still see the trees on the side of the road. But behind it, it could be a clear cut. And when I was growing up, that's what we called the 50% basal area law. In that you could not cut 50% of the basal area, in other words, you you, you, you know, measure the tree, the height of the tree, okay? And then, from a certain period, from a certain distance in, you could only cut 50%. So the whole point was, you didn't want people to be driving down the highway and all of a sudden, look at this, complete clear cut.
Question also to ask, doesn't it project on the acreage?
Or just the person owns?
Yeah, of course. It's, you know, actually, the laws actually have to do with how much acreage you have. But the point is, if you have one acre of land, and you want to clear cut it, you still have the 50%, but that mostly applies to large acreage of open paper land. Now, of course, if we're on Senate Road, somebody can do it. But the point is, if you're going to make a definition of what rural is, you gotta be careful of that.
Okay, let me just add to that, the they've also been called, basal strips are also called beauty strips. It looks really nice, it seemed like it dressed it up, but it doesn't really preserve the environment at all. It, you could have clear cut and make, make the the drivers going down the roads feel like they're in a wooded area, but there could be nothing of rural character beyond that. So I think we, the rural character is more than just looking at trees as you're in your car. It's having a place to go for walks in the woods. Your habitat, birds and wildlife, all things. Your habitat, birds and wildlife, all things, and the health of the rawest streams and.
It's just an example. So the point is, if you have a certain part that, that is cleared inland, you got to be careful that, okay, so you can have 50 feet that's clear cut, and then you have a set of trees or whatever. My point is, is that if you set it back 50 feet, okay? And then, you know, the law regulations say, okay, well, we have trees here, what happens beyond that initial buffer?
Yeah. You know, it, this, I've been on the board a long time, and this always comes up, we wanted to find what rural character means. Personally, I'd rather have someone else tell us what it is, because you can never define it. There's been times where we talked about having that 50-foot wooded buffer, and then someone said, but what about the tree farm? I want to see the trees, that's rural character. Or cows, cattle or grazing. And if, so how do you include that? Then you, it's a ball of yarn, I don't know how we can ever do this. We could.
Well, it's like, it's like art, I know it when I see it.
Exactly.
Yeah, very true. That's the problem, that's the problem we've had all along. We have a group.
You and another person who's trying to say something.
Susan Senate is trying to say something.
Right, she needs to be able to allow to speak.
Agreed.
Go for it, Susan.
Thank you. So we're also talking about rural character, and we talked, I've talked many times with Ted about the setbacks that we have for your housing developments. And the fact that the trees are, when you have a rural area that's grown for years and years and years and years, and your trees are now very full grown and they're very tall, and then you cut back, and then what's left is basically spindling of dead brush tree in between and full grown trees. And so you not really have a rural character anymore, because you have one large tree trunk, and then everything else was cut around it, because the little trees were grown, are dead underneath it from growing. So you have no real setback when you have your things, you have basically large trees left and then nothing else in between. So again, talking about, I know that we've talked, Ted and I have talked many times about this is a part of, you guys have discussed this before, yes, you're doing 25 foot back or 50 foot back, but what's left is dead brush and large overgrown trees. So you're not really creating the rural character from the road, you're creating basically a line of, of dead things and very large overgrown beautiful trees, but you're not creating something. So discussing what that actually looks like when you're making all of these housing developments should be something to consider, because people that have lived here before, or just the fact of looking at it, now you just see these big open areas again of trees, because there's nothing left once they cut it back. And they're following your rules, you're doing 25 feet, but there's really nothing alive at the base, because everything's so large, because it's been trees forever.
Yeah, well, Ted and I have had the discussion about the distance aspect of it.
Or just requiring them to refill it with other things to make life grow back up once they've cut it back, because they're basically taking away the infrastructure of the forest by cutting back away from it. It's, and including with wildlife, you're talking about it, or the ponds or everything else. So I'm not really sure how you would do that, but making it wider doesn't necessarily, it's going to make it better, because again, the undergrowth is just life.
But that's where we would have buffer and requirements, to say, you've got to buffer 80% so that there's no, you can't see through it. And if everything grows up to the point where you can see through it, you got to fix the problem.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And that's what we're looking at. It's one of the issues that we have, well, you, you see it quite well from where you're at.
Yes, she does.
And it's one of the issues that, that needs to get addressed. The, the issue, from, from my point of view, we have, we have a comprehensive plan that says that we have to maintain rural character, and nobody on the comprehensive planning committee can tell us what rural character is.
And I don't think they won't. Can tell you. No. I really don't, how did we come up with the definition of it?
I don't know, but that's, it's in the comp plan, we're supposed to have it.
Well, maybe that needs to change.
Was what my road was, but now it is not, but that's fine, we'll move on.
I'm not, I'm not advocating anything, I'm kind of playing the devil's advocate, saying anything we discuss, try to define it, it's, it's a landmine.
It's like trying to nail Jell-O to the wall.
Yes, it's called slime.
It is, because we're doing this against the backdrop of restricting private land rights.
Right.
So that's, that's got to be done carefully.
Yeah, correct.
But you're also talking about adding more development, so it should be done before you add more developments to it.
True. Well, as always, in these situations, things are reactive instead of proactive. And we're facing what everybody else in other more developed and suburbanized areas of the state or down, or I should say, New England have experienced, is that you don't really know what your rural character is. You know, you, you value your landscape, you value your townscapes, and you think it's going to stay that way and change slowly, and it doesn't, it changes very, very rapidly. And we can't, we can't define a generic rural character, but we can define a, a character that's important to the locale of where you are. And what is important? We have, rural character is not just hiding everything, it's, it's, actually, it's a balance of, of open areas, a feeling of openness in some places where we have fields, other places where it closes back down again and we have trees, other places where we, we have, we can actually have architecture in there, we can have buildings in there, but they're arranged in such a way where they're not dominating the landscape, they're kind of nestled in. And you, there, there are ways you can do this, but you have to be able to define it, you have to be able to identify it, define it, and then regulate it in a way so you can build and yet at the same time, create a design that you can actually preserve what you consider to be important or a rural view. And we're talking, you know, we argued all the time about what rural character really is, and it really boils down to a view and what you see along the road, what you, how you perceive your, your, the area that you're passing through. And we argued about, you know, rural character being, I used to say, hey, I, I lived in East, and rural character was having five abandoned cars in your front lawn along with everything else. That is rural character, I mean, that's, Columbia Falls, you know? Is that the character you want to project?
Metabems, okay.
Yeah, metabems, yeah, metabems are, yeah, you're, yeah, you know Aurora out on the whale back. But, yeah, it's, 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 there are certain landscape prototypes that we can try to achieve, and we can design for that. The, the island then took, did a pretty bang up job trying to do that when they were inundated by development in the, in the 70s. They did a, a project in which they had design standards where they would reward people for doing a subdivision, if they were able to conceal the buildings in a way that looked natural. Fold it into the folds of the land, maintain trees in someplace, have openings so you can see into the moors. But you're rewarded that, so it's got to be a reward basis. It's less than a regulation, it's a reward basis in which they convinced the planning board that they can have more units, or they can have them closer together, or whatever we decide, or whatever the town decides, I shouldn't say we. And that would encourage them to do it that way, rather than prescribe it. And the planning board becomes the judge, become an art judge, you become a, you know, a, a judge of whether or not they achieve those, those goals. And it's hard to do, nobody said it would be easy, but right now, we're not, we're not, our, our simple, easily applied standards are not working. And Susan mentions it, you go out there and you see that that's not working at all. And we saw it over in another project on, on, what was that? That was on, that was on Campground Road, not Campground, it was on Log Cabin.
Log Cabin Road.
Yeah.
Cabin Road.
They did, they didn't cut trees 25 feet there, and there's nothing. And it's, it's an abject failure. We did not achieve what we wanted to achieve. I think it's a mistake to say that we should hide everything. You shouldn't hide everything. But there's a way of being able to do it, to, to have a sense of openings and, and placement of buildings and trees and open spaces in a way that it's, it doesn't look like suburbia, and it doesn't look like it's, you're in the middle of, let's say, I don't know, township 20. So.
Are there any of our neighbors that have done a good job? You know, I think you mentioned a couple of towns that are not far from here that have done a fairly decent job.
Well, they do it through guerrilla tactics.
Trying to protect that view.
Yeah, oh, no, they do. I, you know, one of the towns I first cut my teeth in did it that way, it was called Woodbury.
And what town was that?
It's called Woodbury, Connecticut. They were, they were, they were terrorists, they were planning terrorists. They made it really, either you gave them kind of what they were looking for, or they would hold you up forever, and your bank would say, okay, no more financing for you. And actually, that caused all the developers who came in, and weeded out the ones who weren't serious, and the ones who were there saying, yeah, actually, this is a good idea, because I can get more money for my product. I can get, I could sell it faster, my absorption rates faster, and I can get more money for it, and I create more desire and more market. And, and so they, they went along with it after a while. They realized that it's better to go along with this, this planning board than to fight them.
Well, and.
Yarmouth does it, if you look at how they, they act sometimes, some of their regulations, they've done it. It's also the desire of the community to achieve these things. They will, they will go along and say, yeah, this is important to us. This is important that we, that we keep this, this, this look that we care, you know, we have some sacred places here, they really mean a lot to us, and we, and we want to keep it. And so we, we have, we've struggled with this, and I think we can continue to struggle. There's some models that we can find, we can adopt some things, but there is no easy prescription. We're not going to be able to say, as Dewey says, oh, you know, 100 feet and it works every time, it doesn't.
Well, we're clearly going to have to make a pitch to increase the legal budget for the town then to take the Woodbridge, Connecticut approach.
Well, I think if people's pocketbooks are important to them, they'll understand that if you do some of this stuff, it only enhances your property value.
Yes.
And that's what that street view did in California, and it would go a long way to do it here as well, because people are coming. And the question is, what do we want to do with them when they get here? And how are we going to direct developers to protect what we've got and what we really care about? And, and raise our property values at the same time.
I'm just truly concerned, moving into the second phase of Oak Ridge Terrace, that there's not going to be something in place before that moves forward to make it different than Oak Ridge one was. Because it, again, they're sort of following your rules, but it's not going from what the discussion was in the planning aspect of it. It's following it technically, not by the heart. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Following exactly what you're saying, but it does not look like in a Arundel community. It looks like, and there's mostly Connecticut and New York people buying the properties, because they're getting away from COVID to come up and to be safe. So if that's where you want to move to, continue with what you're doing, go to the next phase. But if you're not, maybe considering what you're talking about now before that goes to the next phase, which I would have talked about if you had done your sidewalk, but that's another story.
Well, yeah, we're going to, we're going to schedule one on that.
I know, that's why I'm here.
Well, to be honest with you, I don't know how many people we would get involved, but that is really an issue for the residents of Arundel. Unfortunately, it's very hard to rally enough of them to get them interested. But I think, you know, if people were watching this discussion who weren't, we'd probably get a lot more people involved. And I think that's part of the challenge, is that there's not enough people who are involved. But if they heard this and what's going on, guess what? Somebody who is busy coming back from work, guess what? They'll have an opinion, he or she. And maybe that's the challenge, because ultimately, it's the residents of this town really have to.
Step up.
Step up and whatever, but it, it is, it's so hard to get them engaged. But this is so important, I don't know how to do it.
And I'm sure you all on the board are, were, were preaching to the choir, that, as I listened to Susan Senate, it's, it's, people move here for what they think is the character, and then they get here and they want to change it. And that's, I guess that's the challenge, is it's the balance between what we have and what we, what we want and what we think we want. And therein lies the, I don't know, the push and pull. I mean, Susan, you labeled it perfectly, that people from away are coming here because of the COVID, and they think they want this, and they see the cows, and they see the trees, and, but then they go, oh, wait, what, well, what do you mean? There's no trash pickup. And, you know, there we have this unusual dichotomy of what we like about our town, what we want to keep the same, but what we also want to try to be able to perhaps maximize. So it's, we're, we're in a complicated time, I would say.
Yes. But I also want to say, lastly, is there, I'm sorry, Ted, but we're not being reactive, we're actually being proactive.
We're trying anyway.
We're trying to be proactive. And it's not, you know, it's not easy, but that doesn't mean we're not trying.
Oh, I, I didn't mean to insult you on that, it's just.
No, there's no insult intended.
But the, the point is that we, we've been talking about it at the comp plan, we've been talking about the planning board for the last.
20 years.
Yes. And, and, and the thing is, the urgency has never been there, and the urgency is there now.
But I think it's, it's, it's what we've all said, it's the engagement of the people.
Yeah.
You know, it's, I'll, I'm going to divert us just for a sec, that there was a, a post on the, the Arundel chatter or whatever, and everybody was all flipping up in arms about the color of the.
Oh, yeah.
And it's like, well, did you, did you weigh it? Do you care? Do you have any opinion? And then you get people that are like, how come we can't go to those beaches? And I'm like, well, get involved, people. Kind of, you know, it's, I have no, like, crusader, but if you give it, who, get involved.
And it's also harder now in the times with what's going on uniquely with COVID and everything else. I think that's, in the short term, is going to make it a lot harder. But anyhow.
Well, progress is made by, you know, by those who get involved and those who, because there are always going to be followers and there's going to be leaders, and that's it. So we can't expect everybody to be involved. The ones that will be involved are those that it means the most to, or at least enough to, to be involved, so that's it.
Dewey? Dewey, to the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
I agree, but turn and look, how many years it's been since we've actually had people at a town meeting? I mean, you're lucky if you get 75, and that's publicized.
That's correct. No, you're absolutely right.
I think people in this town don't even, so many of the newer residents don't even know that that's how decisions get made.
I've suggested it for years to put it on TV, but I've been shot down and I don't know what I'm talking about or anything else. People could sit home, have their dinner, have their tea, and watch, watch the show.
Well, how do you vote, Marty?
Just like this, just like we're voting today.
I realize that, but if it was a better communication for being put through by the town, instead of trying to watch a video, because some people don't even want to watch a video, because the video don't come out until a week later.
But no, Marty's, I mean, look at the technology we have today. I mean, if I wanted to, I could do this little raise my hand thing. There's plenty of ways, Marty, you're 100% on, that with, if there's an upside of the COVID, this is it. And these are the ways to get people involved.
You know, the irony is in this town right now, that the only board that's actually using the Zoom is the planning board.
We are, we're the only ones around.
We could have 100 people in this meeting. It'd be a nightmare for me to do minutes, but it could be done. We can have 100 people on this, on this.
No, I mean, this is what I do for my work, I do it all day long. I, I participate, I lead, this is, this is the way the world goes right now. I don't love it, but it is what it is.
This is how I get most of my educational requirements for CE credit, is just sitting here looking at this stupid computer.
Well, and it's, it's here for a while, I don't think it's going anyplace.
I hope that's wrong.
I think, I think it's going to be at least six to eight months before we're. I don't, I think it's going to be, I, at least six to eight months before we're back in meetings.
But it's become a way that actually is viable, whether we enjoy it or not. It is, I mean, we're all doing it. Here we are sitting here doing it. So it is.
I think we're.
Dewey, I think to your point, the issue is more of an apathy than it is anything else.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
I don't want to get involved. It's going to take too much.
It's okay.
No, he's, he's quoting that people don't, people are like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of.
And then they get mad.
The thing too, that might be better if you had an actual thing that you wanted to discuss to make it the only thing, or something very similar on the announcement versus in down as rural discussion, because what does that mean? So it would be a definition of world, like if you wanted to do something, you have to be, again, as a teacher, define it. Say what you want to talk about, because if I just saw that on a bullet point, I wouldn't have no idea what you're talking about. Because you're talking with coordinates and you're talking about your numbers, but if you say, this is what I'd like to talk about as a town, and put it out as a Zoom, and put it out as something that is a, as an option or a statement, then people, more people might be more willing to come on and listen to it versus it just being buried in your agenda items.
That's, that's a good point.
I like that idea. A very.
Make it a single point discussion meeting like you do when you have your special sidewalk meetings or your specialist meeting, and you have an actual meeting for this purpose, similar to when I, because I was a school board member, if you remember back in the day. I was on the one for the, although the school board for making all the new, um, plans for all the schools that we now have. We had meetings for Kennybunk High School. We had meetings for Mildred Day. We had meetings for this. And it was the only discussion. It's the only way people would come because they didn't want to get lost in the minutia of line item veto things and then get, like, wait until nine o'clock to discuss what you want to talk about.
Well, fair, very fair. You know what your expectation is, you know what your point is.
To discuss it. Because then they. For that purpose.
And that is a good point, Susan.
Thank you.
So Marty, if we do that, are you going to be the moderator?
No.
All right, folks, I gotta, I believe it. I'm actually headed to the Middle East here on the weekend, so I'm going to be gone for a couple of weeks.
The Middle East, like Virginia, right?
Yeah, like Connecticut. He's going to Connecticut.
You can zoom in. We'll let you.
Yeah, well, you know, Marty, the, the truth is, is that they've had things locked down. It's actually safer there than it is here in the U.S. with regard to COVID.
Wow.
They just don't step on the IEDs.
Now, well, that's true. No, we, we actually, we're not allowed to go out in the desert because of that. But this is a oil refinery stuff, environmental consulting, so anyhow.
Be safe while you're over there.
Yeah. You said.
Yep. So unfortunately, for a couple of weeks, you're not going to have my input.
Well, thanks for your input tonight.
Thanks, thanks, Dewey.
Thank you much.
All right. Take care, folks.
And I will look forward to talking to you guys soon.
Okay.
Okay, so let's. Let's go back to the agenda.
Through the chair, can we set sidewalk? And go home?
We got to do one other thing first before we get to that point. If you notice.
Well, Susan, we could do it so Susan can bug out of here.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, we could. Okay.
Are you trying to get rid of me? Is that what you're?
Oh, no, not at all. I thought you were.
Trying to go, okay, Susan, now you can go. Bye bye.
No, you can stay for the rest of it, but if you want to go, we'll let you go.
Okay, that I have to do less than planning, so go right ahead.
Okay, sorry about that.
So when would you, when would you guys like to do the sidewalk?
When Walter's going to be available.
I'm thinking, no, I think we tell him. This is when we're coming.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's what I meant to say.
I agree.
I agree.
No, we, we had a sidewalk, and I got to tell you, I'm a little.
I waited for half an hour, forty-five minutes.
You will see when we get out there, but when he canceled the sidewalk, I told you he was going to pave that road. And he did.
Right, but I waited forty-five minutes for you all to show up. And, and like, so I'm saying, there was no way for me to know otherwise. I just waited and finally the engineer came because he wasn't told either, and so we just met with him and.
He's the one who know, he's the one who told us that Walter wasn't going to be there and requested the cancellation.
Right, and Walter, in other words, it's, he didn't know that you guys weren't coming. So we finally had Dolly tell us, come up the street and tell us to go home.
She, she called me and I told her.
Yes, I know.
How about October sixth, Rich? Is that, is that enough time, uh, Tad?
Twenty-four hours for a sidewalk.
Okay, how about October sixth?
Because, three days, because there's a lot of people that are going to want to participate, so.
I think I'd rather do it, if, if it's at all possible, I'd rather do it on a Saturday.
Well, that's when a lot of people are home.
And, and the rea, the reason I say that, if we do it on a Tuesday evening at six o'clock, it's going to be dark.
Why six o'clock? Why don't they do it earlier? We only need three, right?
There's a, there's a lot of territory. It's a big site.
And the residents would like to go.
The residents.
I'm just afraid that, that, uh, yeah, we only need three people to have it, but I'm afraid that it's, it is such a big area, and there are so many different issues that, that need to get addressed that, uh, we'd end up standing out there in the middle of the night trying to figure out what's going on.
So Susan, would people be more inclined to meet us on a Saturday morning?
We would there on a Saturday morning.
Right, right. I meant, that was.
General, that would be better because we are working, so in, most people are coming back and forth. So if people would be going, they'd be going Saturday morning versus.
Well, I can, I can be there on a Saturday morning, so you tell me.
Well, I, I was thinking of October third, which is, which is a sad, this, this Saturday is too soon. We can't get it advertised. But the following Saturday, to me, would make more sense.
I can be there October third.
I cannot. I'll be away.
Okay. What about you, Tom?
I, that's a week from, that's a week from Saturday?
A week from Saturday.
Yeah, I'll be away that week.
Guys are running over each other.
I won't be, I'll be there, um, on the third.
Okay. Roger?
I can be there on the third or the following Saturday.
The tenth?
It's Columbus Day weekend.
Weekend.
The third is?
Do you know the following, the tenth is the holiday weekend.
Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, that, that, that's.
Well, Roger, can you go on the third?
Yeah.
I can be there on the third. Rich, if you can be there on the third, that's three.
I can be there, Marty.
Depends on my boiler coming.
That leaves Jamie.
I will try, but I'm not making commitment because I don't, my plans are up in the air.
This time of year when it gets warm.
Well, at this, at this point, I.
Do you need three or four?
Three.
Three.
I'd like to get as many as possible, actually.
Well, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should be more than less.
Is the seventeenth too far away?
I'm sorry.
Is the seventeenth too far away?
Yeah, I'd like to get this, this done so that we can get it, get it addressed.
Okay.
Don't forget, we got weather coming.
Yeah, we got weather coming. Well, hopefully someday.
Gosh, don't, October. They're also trying to push in my trees, by the way. You know how you were saying you wanted to have everything done? They're trying to put my trees, they're trying, they've never spoken to me about putting the trees in that they promised me until Mike came over when they were paving the road again yesterday. Um, and said, we're have trees coming for you on the twenty-eighth, but they haven't, they hadn't talked to me about what kind of trees or where they were going to go, how many, but they're coming to be planted on the twenty-eighth. No one contacted me. Um, and they were going to put arborvitae, and I don't want that. On the plan, it says, they're telling me I have to get conifers. On my agreement, it says vegetation or plants. So if by rule, do they, do they have to be conifers for your plan? And if so, someone can tell me later. But does that have to require, I don't want big plant, uh, trees. I just want things to block. Do you mean, like, they cut down all of my bushes that were in the right of way? I just want the bushes to come back. I don't need it to be a big, huge.
Well, I don't think the bushes in the right of way are going to come back because that's going to be draining.
No, no, sir. I don't mean in the right of way. I mean, I just want bushes.
A bush is going to do it for you, though.
There were big ass bushes. I'm just saying, the bushes, it being a spruce tree or a big hu, you know what I mean? Like a.
Well, as I told you, probably junipers would be a good one because they're only probably going to get about as big as the arborvitae we get.
Do they have to be conifers is my question.
Well, the issue is, do you want to see the, you want to see your neighbors through the defoliated trees in the winter time?
A rhododendron does not lose its leaves.
That's true, but it takes a long time to get five feet tall.
A ye, a summer. Mine is grown back in a year. I'm not questioning it. I'm asking, does that in the plan have to follow a conifer?
Uh, could change if the planning board gives me the authority to.
I don't want them all to be gone. In other words, I want my, I want, I want to have a variety of plants.
Does it say conifer? Does it say?
It says conifer on the plan.
That's what I'm asking you, because that wasn't presented to me when I signed my agreement.
Yeah.
What is term, what does the term conifer mean?
Pine trees, things that grow.
No, it's, it's an ever, it's basically, it's a needle to evergreen. That's what it is.
So in other words, I, I, they wanted to put eighteen or eight, I don't even know how many they said.
Sixteen.
Says sixteen on your plans. On my agreement, it says eight vegetation things that I signed, which I guess doesn't mean anything except as.
Well, it's because he's going to have to give me either, well, see, what I was trying to tell you is that he's supposed to give me sixteen conifers, and that's going to be expensive. Because I, I'm not going to take four foot trees. They have to be four to six.
You're telling me it's going to be six trees that were going to be planted a, along the front of my property without them really telling me about it?
Let's, let's give Tad authority to make the change based on the conversations that he has with Susan regarding the species of tree that they want to put in.
I would agree. And I would agree, and then, and also then get back to what we started with, and that's setting the sidewalk.
Sorry, I didn't mean to distract. I'm tired. Okay.
So let's, what about some day next week? Is it, is it good for anybody?
I can make it work because I'm working from home, and so you just tell me and I can be there.
Yeah, I can, I can be there at any point. I just want to get it done so that we can, once we've gotten this done, we can get it onto an agenda.
And also, it's before he does anything more, I think we should get there.
Yeah. He's doing what was approved. That's the point. He's doing what was approved. As Susan says, he's following the letter of the law. And, uh, you can't fault him on that, but you know, as I told his engineer, I said, you got a problem with second means of egress. And that means if you actually do the development you're talking about, you're going to have to extend that, expand that road to a collector status instead of a minor road, which is another four feet.
Isn't it still a dead end, though?
Uh, it's still a dead end, but he, if he were to do that, here's a, yeah, this is the, this is the, the, the problem is that it's got to be, uh, uh, two, two connections to a, a road that's a town road or, uh, on approved subdivision plan. And the planning board's going to decide whether or not it's safe to, uh, have all those houses on one dead end road without a second means of egress out. Now, you remember, you did the same thing to Joe. You made him go out in a meadow. You did the same thing to Kurt Hisong. He had to go out onto Liberty Acres.
Yep.
Um, by the way, Rich, I told, I told Kurt, I gave Kurt the condition, uh, which he can get a CO, by the way. I haven't heard back from him yet, but.
You told him to pave the road, right?
Told him to pave the road. So, uh, anyways, the, uh, the, that's a, it's a planning board issue. It's a planning board issue of good planning, you know? We have more than twenty, two hundred, we're going to have more than twenty-four houses on, uh, Laurel Lane when this is all said and done, the way, the way the plans are right now. That means we're going to have to, more than two hundred fifty trips, which means that it's got to have a second means of egress. And we have to include Laurel Lane. So the issue is, what are you going to do to remedy this?
You've answered the question already.
Maybe he can build a bridge, maybe he can bridge, build a bridge over the turnpike and reconnect to North Skilling's.
I know he's talking to Rainy Turgeon because Rainy has all the land going back towards, um, the other the North Skilling's Road.
Yeah, but the only problem is there's a piece of land between Rainy and North Skilling's Road, and it's owned by a guy from Massachusetts. So whether he'd be interested in doing that is another story, but we're talking about a lot of, we're talking about a good amount of money to do that. That's a long run of road to do.
I digress you. I'm sorry. Your planning time. I apologize. I didn't.
Sidewalk, guys, sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk.
All right. So we got the third and possibly something else in the middle of the week?
October next Thursday.
Next Tuesday?
Thursday.
Next Thursday, one o'clock, uh, the first?
I can do that.
Yeah.
But what about making it so that residents can be there too?
It's the issue.
That's an issue. They, they probably, they want to come. Susan, is that the case? Don't people want to come?
Yeah.
They do, so.
They want to know what's happening because there are things that have happened in plans, and they were proved by you, and rightfully so, that people were not aware of. So people want to be aware of moving forward. That's why I'm here all the way through this lovely meeting so that I can report to the town, to our road people of what happened and what you discussed.
Yeah.
How about six o'clock?
Not enough time. Gets dark at seven. You're going to be out in the, the boonies. You want to walk that land back there. You really do. Is he walking? Because they've already clear cut it.
By his face.
Five o'clock.
We'll do five on the, on the first?
You think, you think we'll get a, a group?
I think people would be able to do five because, because people get out of work at three thirty, four thirty, or they can get there if they know and they have enough time if they want to come.
Okay, well, I'm fine with that. I, that works for me.
My camera and take a video with us too, but I can be back by four fifteen, so.
Can we take a motion to make sure we got enough that can do it?
I'm going for five.
Roger. Yeah, one, two, three. Tom, can you do it or not?
Marty, not you?
No.
Well, I can do it. I can do it Saturday. I can do it the first. I can do it any day. You just tell me. But I think the residents should have an opportunity, we should do it at a time that they could participate.
Yeah, five o'clock on Thursday is good.
Well, we got.
I'll, I'll be there, five o'clock on Thursday.
All right. I'll make the motion that we scheduled for then. Five o'clock next Thursday.
Which is the first.
The first.
Second. I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Marty?
I guess so.
Roger?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is unanimous. October first, five o'clock.
See, this is why we have to shift the meeting time, guys, because now I have to do this remotely.
Thank you very much for, for tolerating me. I appreciate it.
Oh, well, thank you for coming, Susan, really.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you for your input.
You're welcome. Bye. Bye.
Okay, what else do we have?
We have the proposed amendment to the bylaws to change the meetings from Thursday to Tuesday.
I make a motion, we approve the amendment?
Second.
Second. Yeah, okay, good.
Okay. Roger made the motion. Marty seconded. Why are we doing this?
Why?
Yeah. So I'm just curious, because we've talked about it a lot, but I've never heard a reason one way or the other. Where do you go?
Well, it gives Tad time to, uh, put things in the paper, especially since he's not working on Fridays. So wasn't that one of the issues, Tad?
Yep, that was the main issue.
Well, hey, don't hang this whole thing on me, guys.
Why not?
What?
Well, that was, that was what I thought. One of the, one of the issues.
It was one of the issues, yeah.
Is because, uh, but I figured we should have the discussion and just, yeah, let's do it. One of the issues is that when Tad has, well, when, tonight, he doesn't work tomorrow. So he's.
He'll go to the Middle East tomorrow.
Or anything gets accomplished and gets processed out through, which kind of cuts into his time. But then you have the issue of, well, if we do it on Tuesday, what are you doing? There's a holiday on Monday. It takes away his time to get everything prepared. I don't think that that's as big an issue, by the way, because if it happens on, if we have a meeting on Tuesday, how often do we have a, a holiday on Monday?
Probably three times a year.
Not nearly as many as we do. Even if we had twelve a year, we've got twenty-four meetings that would end up, uh, being somewhat hampered. So I, I just wanted to find out what, what was, why people wanted to make the change.
Make the selectmen happy. Make the selectmen happy.
Keep who happy?
Yes, like it. And I think Jamie liked it, as I recall.
Okay.
Well, is there, are there any other town meetings that, that are on Tuesday?
Building committee.
They're, they're out of, they're out of business now.
Yeah, they're done. No, there isn't. To my knowledge, there's nothing else on Tuesday.
The only thing that happens on a Tuesday is if there's a Monday holiday, selectmen, and it's a week, a Monday that the selectmen usually have, they, they schedule it to the Tues, that Tuesday, but that's, but we, I don't know if anybody read the fine print, but you remember, you, one of the things you said was, we're gonna do it every first and 3rd Tuesday.
Right, and the selectmen are on the 2nd and 4th.
We're gonna avoid the selectmen.
Yeah.
Yep.
We will avoid any overlap.
That's right. Okay, all right, good.
And hang on just for a sec. Susan, can you send Jens the invite? He got knocked out.
Oh, for the Zoom? Yes.
Yeah, he got knocked out.
I'll do it right now.
Yeah, and that's, and like I said, that's fine. And that'll work. We go to the 1st and 3rd.
Yeah.
As long as the selectmen don't decide they want to meet on the 1st and 3rd.
At this point, I'll say they do.
Well, at this point, we'll simply say to them, no, we've changed everything to accommodate the schedule. You're out of luck. It probably won't go anywhere.
No, this won't.
I've been made, I, I've been known to tilt at windmills before.
The windmills win.
Well, yeah, they do.
Jens back in yet?
No, I just, I just sent it to him.
Okay.
Here he comes.
All right. There he is.
There he is. Okay, so we had this great discussion about you while, while you were gone.
He's muted.
You're muted. You gotta unmute yourself. Lower left hand corner.
How's that?
That's better.
Okay, sorry about that, gang. My battery died on my iPad.
Not a problem. So we had this great discussion while you were gone about, you know, just why were we, we were gonna do it? And Tad brought up the, the fact that, that we're also changing the, the format of the week. We're going from the 2nd and 4th Thursday to the 1st and 3rd Tuesday, which will avoid conflicts with the Board of Selectmen because they're on the 2nd and 4th Monday.
Okay, just to answer the question, at least, because you, I think you directed the question, maybe it may.
Oh, no.
No?
No, it was just, I, I know that you had suggested it, Jamie had talked about it. I just never heard a good explanation as to why. It's just like, why do we want to change it? I don't care one way or the other.
Okay. My, at least from, from me, I'm beginning more and more to think of Friday as a part of the weekend. In fact, like Friday, like Thursday night is part of the weekend and therefore it's like to break away. And it's good to get your sort of business stuff done in the early part of the week and so you can flake off toward the end of the week. We're getting, I'm getting to that age, you know? It's just how I feel.
I, yeah, I have no problem with it.
So that, that's my good reason.
Okay.
Plus the town hall is closed on Friday.
Plus the town hall is closed on Friday.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. I remember Tad saying that.
Okay, so somebody needs to make a motion.
You've already done it. You already did it.
It's already been done. Never mind that.
Good, yeah. Jens is late to the game. You can ask him if you voted for it against it.
We haven't voted on it.
I voted for it.
All right, vote for, yeah, it was more, it was Roger and Marty.
That made the motion.
Right.
I.
Marty says yes. Roger?
Hi.
Tom?
Uh, I'll abstain, guy. Either way, it doesn't matter. I'm gonna abstain.
Susan?
Yes.
Jens?
Hi.
5-1. 5-1, 1, 2, 3, 4. Yeah, 5 to 1.
So that's 5, 5, 4, 1 abstaining.
5, 4, 1 abstaining, and that will take effect at the beginning of January.
Right, the beginning of the year.
Okay, good.
So we've gotta make, we've gotta make dibs with somebody for the room, right? We can't just make the vote. We gotta sort of follow it up with, make sure that the gatekeeper lets us have that time.
Well, we'll probably still be on Zoom in January.
Yeah.
I hope not.
Oh, geez, really.
But that will make the first meeting on January 5th.
Okay.
And that actually works out well because coming out of, out of Christmas, we usually don't have meetings.
Well, unless we get some more applications, we're gonna be dealing with a lot of ordinance stuff, let me tell you.
But our last meeting will be on the 9th of December.
Oh, that's nice.
Because we're not meeting, uh, uh, the 10th of December, I'm sorry. We're not meeting Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. So we'll meet on.
That's good.
We'll meet on the 10th of December, which is a Thursday, and we'll open up on January 5th, which is.
What, what's it look like for November? I don't have a calendar for me, but.
For November?
Yeah.
One week.
We have the 12th because the 26th is Thanksgiving. So I mean, we could meet, we could meet twice. We could meet on the 12th and the 19th, or we can just meet on the 12th.
All depends on what we have for, for agendas.
Right. I think, I think that is the issue, but when it gets to December, we're gonna have the one meeting.
Okay.
All right. Do you, you want to entertain a, a motion adjourn?
Absolutely.
Before we do that.
No, Marty.
Still staying on Zoom?
We're staying on Zoom as long as we are under the emergency regulations from General Mills, uh, from the Governor Mills.
Yep. That's my understanding. The manager may change that. I don't know.
Yeah, that's what he has said at this point. Now, once they get into the building, he may very well say to us, no, we can do the social distancing, so you have to come back to the building. I don't know.
It is a, it's a large facility, guys, and we're gonna have a deus and you're all gonna have individual microphones.
Wow.
Yeah.
Just like Kenny Bunk. Whoa.
Just like Kenny Bunk, but it's got more headroom. Much more headroom. And there's no accordion doors or no accordion walls, so. Yeah, it's a, it's a nice building, by the way, regardless of what about the color.
I think the color is great. I was a little, I was a little shocked by it too, but you know what? It's earthy.
Yeah. The discussion on, on the Facebook page was hysterical.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of.
All that's happening with America Burning, we're worried about the color of the, the town hall.
Well, thank, thank God, that we're worried about that instead of that other madness.
Oh, no kidding. No kidding. Yeah.
The motion's been made.
I'll second it.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Good night, folks.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will sit.
Good night.
Next Thursday evening.
Okay.
We'll see on the 1st, too.
Yeah, that's next Thursday.
Oh, well, so I'll see you next Thursday. 5 o'clock.
All right.
Good night, guys.
Bye.
Good night.